Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, December 12th, 2018, to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble is excused. Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Legions. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Do I hear that motion? So move. Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item four is community comment. Those of you wishing to make a comment, please come up to the table, sign in at the on the sheet of paper there with your name and address, and also state your name and address for the record. We ask you to keep your comment to three minutes, please. Would anyone like to make a comment? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Beena Gams. I live at 9011 West Houghton Lane. And I just wanted to inform the board that myself and two other parents met with Dr. Mueller and Kristi Pedrona Bowden on Friday. Although we appreciate it, their time, we still have a high level of concern regarding the upcoming middle school educational plan. The Franklin City Newsletter that just came out details that forty-three point seven percent of the property taxes goes to the school district. In addition to this, Franklin citizens approved a forty-three point three million dollar referendum for this new middle school. Considering this enormous fiscal responsibility, I believe this warrants a public informational meeting to be held to communicate the substantial upheaval of the middle school to the general public. These changes impact our community, not just families with children. One of the leading factors in choosing a place to live is the quality of the educational system. In my opinion, a state of the art facility with teachers instructing in areas outside of their focused area of expertise and passion is a step definitely in the wrong direction. It is not just myself that is convinced that this is not a good idea. I have a list of two hundred and forty citizens that have documented that they are against the two-teacher-led house system at the middle school. The public deserves to have their opinions heard. In addition, on multiple occasions, the administration has stated that teachers were significantly involved in the decision and had that on a whole, teachers supported it. Ted Craig, who works with the Teachers Association in Franklin, has been following the controversy and decided to do a confidential survey of the twenty-four core teachers in seventh and eighth grade who will be directly affected by these changes. He reached out to me to share the results. By a margin of fifteen to two, the teachers say they do not feel that the decision to make a move to a two-person house structure is an educationally sound decision that is in the best interest of the Franklin students. By an eighteen to zero margin, they said that they did not personally have input into the decision to move to a two-person house structure. And by seventeen to one margin, they said teachers in general did not have input into the decision to move to a two-person house structure. Clearly, if one hundred percent of the seventh and eighth grade core teachers that felt comfortable with responding feel that they did not have input into this decision, then there's a grave discrepancy between the teacher's survey and what the administration has reported. I think teachers' opinions should carry a substantial amount of weight when it comes to matters concerning the school system and our children. Yet sadly, it appears that is not the case here. I believe this new plans needs to be addressed in an interactive public meeting where information can be discussed. A notice of the listening session should be included in the Franklin City Newsletter or some other widespread publication to all citizens of Franklin, in addition as a link in the school bulletin. No research or evidence has been supplied to show to the public to show the proposed change to a two-teacher-led house system will benefit the students for their preparedness for high school. This published notice of the listening session should include an explanation of what a two-house-led, two-teacher-led house system truly looks like. Teachers will be required to teach outside their area of expertise and explain how the house system works, how many children are in a house, and exactly what a house system looks like now. It is clear from my list of two hundred and forty citizens that are against this plan, the information supplied is not convincing and not supportive of this substantial change. In addition, teachers do not feel listened to nor involved in this decision. We should all have the best interests of our children and school in mind. The best result will, the best result will emerge when there is an open and honest communication with teachers, parents, and the community of the school district. I would like to ask, how many people here oppose the two-house system? It appears there's about forty-five to fifty people here that oppose this system. And I can turn this in, this document in, the petition that says there's two hundred and forty people that also oppose the petition. And I do have the document from the teachers also stating that they do not support this information. Do you want me to leave it here or hand it to you?
You can hand it to me, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Tamara Grob Schmidt. I live at eighty-three twenty River Terrace Drive. I'm voicing my concern about the proposed change of the middle school structure to have seventh and eighth grade classes led by two-teacher houses. Math teachers teaching science and vice versa isn't the best use of talent resources. And I know the rebuttal to this is that middle school teachers have a general K eight certification for any core subject matter. But due to the level of rigorous material that middle schools has nowadays, middle school teachers do specialize and focus their professional development in one specific content area. It would be a waste not to utilize their talents to see, to teach the subject matters that they have focused their careers on. In the proposed system, where one teacher focuses on math and science and the other on language arts and history, teachers will be stretched. And research shows that it takes a new teacher three years to achieve the same similar results as their more experienced colleagues. And this will most certainly have an implementation dip where our students' test scores will go down. Our talented Franklin teachers will be able to rise to the task of being able to offer learning activities in the content area that they are newly assigned. However, I'm certain that they will not have the same instructional toolbox of teaching strategies. The experienced content teacher has a larger toolbox of teaching strategies to pull from when their students are struggling with content. Teachers, when their non-dominant subject matter, won't have that experience to anticipate areas where students will struggle and be able to readily provide intervention to get the students back on course. Why would we want to take this risk when the specialized teacher is just down the hall? Recent communication from the district shows motivation for this change has been to increase interdisciplinary work. However, in the current system of a four-house system, this already is an interdisciplinary team approach. Interdisciplinary doesn't always mean that different subject areas need to be taught by the same teacher. It can be done thematically and taught by several teachers. Other goals highlighted were to increase personal relationships. However, in the four-teacher system house, this is already designed to increase personal relationships. In meeting with Dr. Mueller, she shared that there is no research that compares a two-teacher house to a three-teacher house to a four-teacher-led house. I do support the increased time to, for direct instruction for literacy, as there is strong research that shows that this will help close the achievement gap for all students. But it hurts me that this will rob time away from world history and American history courses so that they will have half the time they presently have. I have seen my daughter's American history infused with literacy principles. Listening to administration, the issue seems to boil down to a scheduling issue while trying to support the goals mentioned. It has been said, the only way we can support these goals is to have a two-person house. But that is a jump that the administration is making. It was not the conclusion of the teacher work group who researched the best practices in middle school education. I don't believe the proposed move will yield the results that they are seeking. Instead, it will produce decrease in job satisfaction for teachers, resulting in a higher job turnover, or perhaps even movement of middle school teachers up to the high school level where they can focus on one subject area that they are passionate about. The result is that newer, less experienced teachers will then be in the middle school level. In conclusion, I'd like to have the scheduling of the seventh and eighth grade to remain a four-teacher house. I don't doubt that scheduling is a challenge, but more options should be explored so that we can retain the four-house system and use teachers' talents the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Any other comment? Hearing none, then I'll close the community comment. Thank you. Item five is the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item six, school board announcements, are there any announcements? Hearing none. Item seven, school board calendar. Seven A, we have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, January ninth, 2019, at the Education and Community Center at six o'clock PM. And seven B, we have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, January twenty-third, 2019, here at the Education Community Center at six o'clock PM. Dr. Mueller, did you want to make any comment? I'm sorry, I skipped that. Regarding the community comment, I wanted to go back to Dr. Mueller.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. And I did prepare comments, so hopefully you can hear me okay. I'll move this closer. So again, I'd like to begin by stating I appreciate your concerns for your child's educational experience in our district. And I've prepared a response to, to the concerns that have been brought forward. In planning for the academic program at the new middle school, we invited all of our sixth through eighth grade teaching staff to participate in the process. It was a large number of people, about seventy-five. And we had thirty-one volunteer staff members who worked on five advisory work teams. They were tasked with studying reliable and valid research about effective middle schools, and then they were asked to make recommendations for our sixth through eighth grade program. Their final recommendations were to focus on the priorities of building relationships, increasing the amount of time for teaching literacy, and providing exploratory opportunities to your students. These recommendations were central to the decision-making that went into the determination of the two-person house configuration and will best meet the needs of our middle school students. The question has come up about what research supports the two-person house model over the four-person house model. That's a really valid question. When reading the research about effective middle schools, the number of teachers within a house was not identified as a factor in whether a middle school was more or less successful. Rather, the research states that creating a house structure where strong relationships with students can be built was an important factor in increasing student achievement. There was no research to support that a four-person house is better than a three-person house, is better than a two-person house. Another concern was raised about asking teachers to teach in an area they have not taught before. As mentioned, teachers in grades six through eight hold a license and are prepared to teach grades one through eight. They learn pedagogical methods that allow them to be successful in teaching all core content areas. We have expert teachers because they know how to convey information to students and inspire them to learn. A teacher's primary job is to help students develop skills as a learner and apply information through analysis, problem-solving, and critical thinking. We realize our teachers' comfort level with this change does vary. We are working with staff to understand what they feel they need to continue to be successful in the new house configuration and have provided opportunities already for them to observe one another in these other content areas. We've held listening sessions with the Forest Park Middle School staff on several occasions and will continue to schedule opportunities for fifth through eighth grade teachers to have their needs addressed. In addition, we have a very dedicated professional development plan, excuse me, detailed professional development plan for the teachers that will prepare them for next fall. Regarding our middle school opportunity, students' opportunity to learn from multiple teachers, there are, students in a two-person house will continue to learn from several teachers and with a diverse student body as they engage in both their core academic classes and exploratory classes each day. In the four-person house, they typically encounter six to eight teachers a day. In the two-person house, they'll typically encounter four to six teachers in a day. The advisory work teams recommend it more time in the student day for literacy instruction. The two-person house is the structure that allows for this to happen. The two-person house also maximizes scheduling flexibility for our exploratory classes. In addition, the two-person house sets the conditions for making important real-world connections in math and science and in the moment, and increases comprehension of literacy skills through teaching social studies. Finally, and of really great importance, the two-person house allows teachers to really know their students. It reduces the number of students in single-core academic classes with a teacher from approximately a hundred and twenty to approximately sixty. By knowing students better as individuals, teachers will be better able to close the achievement gaps for all learners. There was a good question about whether we could have a four-person house only at eighth grade. Doing this would allow for eighth grade students, would not allow for eighth grade students to have additional time for literacy. It would also require a completely different schedule and staffing plan. The staffing plan would create more part-time, hard-to-fill positions and would also create additional costs to the district. In closing, I'd like to say that I'm proud of our staff and I have a lot of confidence in them. As a superintendent of this district and a professional educator for almost thirty years in this district, I fully support our plan for the new middle school. Finally, I can assure you, assure you that we're working every day in Franklin Public Schools to make it a better place to learn. So thank you again for coming this evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to item eight, reports, presentations, and other school business. Eight A, our Volition Youth Annual Presentation, we have Ms. Nansky, public health nurse, and our Volition Youth. Hi, students.
Hi.
Hello, good evening. I'm just going to pass around our annual report from the last school year to reference, and also a handout about electronic cigarettes, which will be about what the presentation does about.
Thank you. So if you'd like to introduce yourselves, that'd be great. Yeah.
Good evening. We are Volition Youth, Volitions Youth Action Group. We meet after school in the middle school and high school once a month and carry out much of volitions prevention work. My name is Shariah and I'm a senior in high school.
My name is Denise and I'm a senior at high school.
My name's Olivia and I'm also a senior at Franklin High School.
The goal of Volition Youth is to empower healthy decision-making by being a positive peer influence and educate others about substance misuse. Specifically, we do underage drinking, prescription pills, and tobacco prevention at school and community events. Some activities that we've done in the past is a sticker shot campaign around graduation for parents who host loose-the-most and teen alcohol parties. Another event we have done is an ice cream social at the middle school educating about how tobacco tricks kids into trying their products with sweet flavors. We've also done National Night Out, educating about the true cost of underage drinking. And we've also done a movie night, offering games and alternative, healthy, fun activities. This past month, we planned for Red Ribbon Week. At the middle school, we handed out candy with labels that said candy-flavored tobacco is a trick, not a treat. At the high school, we handed out drug prevention bookmarks and red socks and ribbons to wear on Thursday that week. We also wrote announcements to be read each day and held up signs with drinking, drug, and tobacco facts before school in the main commons. Tonight, we are here to talk to you about vaping. Vaping has increased nine hundred percent in high schoolers from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen, according to the Surgeon General. That's about one in every seven high school students.
What is vaping? Vaping, it's easy to hide because the devices are small and sleek, have hundreds of sweet and decadent flavor like gummy beer, slushy, coffee, candy, fruit, desserts, even alcohol. It's trendy and has a lot of social media presence through the actual company and other followers. Near two in five middle and high school students have been exposed to e-cigarettes ads online. While we're still learning some long-term risks about vaping, we already know a lot. E-cigarettes are not regulated by the FDA. The products contain chemicals like benzoyl acetate and glycerol, which are not approved for inhaling and help deliver high amounts of nicotine in the brain. Nicotine is most, is in most e-jus and all joules. Fix or drop devices is addictive and harms brain development. It can create mood swings, decrease the ability to learn and think, and increase the risk for addiction to other substances. Products are relatively cheap. Once you purchase the initial jou, the pod costs less than a pack of cigarettes. One joule pod is equals to one pack of cigarettes. Other devices like fix and drop have even more nicotine in them.
And I would just like to add on to my peers that these facts, you're getting a lot of facts thrown at you right now, and I think that we can absolutely confirm that we see about one in seven students in our school that are vaping.
Yes.
So for, this is actually sort of the most interesting, a very interesting part, because we're about to show you the products that we see our peers using. And it's not like how tobacco products were when you guys were in high school and tobacco was a big problem.
Yeah.
Because those were still targeted towards youth with like Joe the Camel and et cetera. However, these products are really, really targeting youth. So to show you the first product, here we have what's called the drop. And this packaging is a lot like the Apple products, like when you get your new Apple phone and it comes out. And they actually do partner with Apple for their packaging, which is crazy. This one, I won't take off, show you guys, because it's sort of assembled and sort of messy. But that's pretty crazy. And this product especially really got me and my advisor when we saw this because it's raspberry mocha, it comes with vape juice, and you can still smell it. And we bought it a couple months ago. You can still smell how it smells like coffee, and it really doesn't have, you can tell that it's especially geared towards kids that would be coughed fingers. The next product is really similar, and this one actually show whenever we have meetings with legislators or politicians, because it's really surprising. It's in a slushy cup. None of you guys would guess, but this is a tobacco product. I mean, I can't speak for all of you, but a lot of you would guess, right? Because it looks just like a slushy cup you would give in quick kiss. And the really funny part is that it did smell like, it did smell like fruit, similar to how that would smell like coffee when we run it out. But this one actually also comes with a lollipop in it. This product is, it's a little bit less common amongst our peers, but it still includes a lot of nicotine, even more than normal tobacco cigarettes would. You heard from Habib that one package of, one joule pod contains about, contains the same amount of nicotine as one package of cigarettes, which is a lot of nicotine, and especially because kids hear about why tobacco is harmful. But they're not hearing as much how nicotine works on brain development. They're not hearing a lot about the nicotine products. And this product is blue, it's a little bit smaller, but you can tell from a lot of these products, they're smaller, they're more sleek, and they're easy to hide, easy to be mistaken for a flashbang. Especially this next product that I'm about to bring out, which is Juul, which is especially popular amongst me and all of my peers. Really popular. These are charged, they are replaced with different pods that come in different flavors, mango, caramel, cucumber, which now they're all being sold online, but you will still have, you find their ways. If they can find access to these, they can find access to them even if they're only sold online. They're charged in a laptop. I've seen kids that charge them in their Chromebooks. And yeah, they're very easily mistaken for a flash drive, which is why it's understandable why teachers don't catch these as much. But the teachers are well-educated in all the products, so it's not like it's them to blame for this huge Juul outbreak. But yeah, and then that same thing goes for this, which is called a drink. And this has even more nicotine in it than other products. I can probably throw their Juul, hey guys? And you can tell how small, how light it is, easily, easy to hide. And it comes in a lot of different flavors, and kids have found ways to replace them with other e-jus. So e-jus can come in different ways, because for example, we have this coffee cup, this one right here, and here's the e-jus inside it. And there's not a coffee flavor for Juul, except kids have found ways to use like screwdrivers and unhook the Juul pods that they could pour this in there, and then they can really have access to any flavor that they would like, which is really crazy, because these contain a lot of nicotine, some even more than cigarettes. And yeah, you can just see it means a really large problem in our community, which is why we're really working on it, and that's what Volition Franklin Youth is here for. It's nice to know, because it's nice to have such a big group this year. We're really growing, and we have a lot of, a lot more students than we did before. So I mean, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah.
And especially because tobacco rates are only going down amongst youth. However, these e-cigarette rates have, they've blasted by like nine hundred percent, didn't you say?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's pretty crazy. And thank you.
So do you have any recommendations for the parents here? How to look for the, you know, it looks like a USB, but where to look at home besides just in the computer? Where are the kids hiding them besides in their Chromebooks? Anywhere else that they can look for the Juul?
Actually, really small, so it can be hidden anywhere. Like where would you put a USB? Probably in your backpack, in your computer. So anywhere pretty much that you can hide it, probably in their backpack or with their phone or something. I mean, that's where I've seen them.
A lot of times, I don't blame the parents if they can't catch their kids doing it. And a lot of times, I can understand if they said, oh, my kid wouldn't do that, except these products, I've seen some kids in my school using them that I'm just like, whoa! Like I just, I would never, I would never, because they're such good kids and they're so smart, and they're pulling like a five-point-O GPA, and they have scholarships, all these places, that I just wouldn't expect it, except they're finding ways. So it's not about expecting to catch them using these products and rummaging through their drawers, unless that's what you do anyways. But really, it's more about educating them, sort of like, they don't want to hear it from you, like tobacco's bad, blah, blah, blah. But sort of like the nicotine content, and like if you see someone vaping in public, like it's just as gross as tobacco, or like, don't glamorize it to them at all. I mean, not that you guys would, but you know, just sort of educating them that nicotine is also bad, and these products really aren't good if you do find them doing it.
Is there an odor that would stay on your person after you use it? Like someone comes out after a cigarette break, you can tell they were on a cigarette break. What about when they use, use cigarettes? Is it the same thing, or is it easier to hide it that way because there isn't really an odor?
I think it depends on the flavor and how big of a hit they take. And yeah, there is odor, but it's easily covered up, like, oh, that's just my car freshener. Or, oh, that's my strawberry pudding or strawberry yogurt in class. You know, like, it's easy to say, oh, that's just my new perfume, because that's what it smells like.
It smells like different flavors.
Yeah.
Like cigarettes, you can easily tell because it has a distinct odor, and we all know what it smells like. But these flavors come in all different types, so it's a lot easier to hide the flavors. But if you can catch it, it does have an odor to it.
And what's the frequency of use? Are they like every hour, you gotta take a hit, or?
I have a story. So I do a lot of this advocating stuff, and telling adults why all these products are bad, which is, yeah, why I'm so comfortable with this. But so I met someone when I was in DC, my friend Maddie, and she's actually coming to Milwaukee because like we can't type or whatever. Anyway, so she was really addicted to these products, and she had her own Juul, and she like she hit it around class, like she was super addicted, and she knew that it was bad. She learned that it was bad from her school group. So she gave it to her friend, and then she started getting really sick, and she started throwing up, and she started running a fever. And she didn't know why, but then when her friend gave her back her Juul and she inhaled it, she got You know, like, it's easy to say, oh, that's just my new perfume, because that's what it smells like.
It smells like different flavors.
Yeah.
Like cigarettes, you can easily tell, because it has a distinct odor, and we all know what it smells like. But these flavors come in all different types, so it's a lot easier to hide the flavors. But if you can catch it, it does have an odor to it.
And what's the frequency of use? Are they, like, every hour, I gotta take a hit, or?
I have a story. So, I do a lot of this advocating stuff, and telling adults why all these products are bad, which is, yeah, why I'm so comfortable with this. But, so I met someone when I was in DC, my friend Maddie, and she's actually coming to Milwaukee, because like we can't type, or whatever. Anyway, so she was really addicted to these products, and she had her own joule, and she, like she hid it around class, like she was super addicted, and she knew that it was bad. She learned that it was bad from her school group. So she gave it to her friend, and then she started getting really sick, and she started throwing up, and she started running a fever. And she didn't know why, but then when her friend gave her back her joule, and she inhaled it, she got all better. And that's when she realized, oh, boy. And that's when she took action. So, that's because she's so addicted. And if kids are so addicted to these products that they feel the need to bring them into school, like when they know that they could get caught, or that there's a punishment for it, I think that's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that they're crazy, but like the whole idea of like the nicotine content in this, it's, I think, yeah, like every hour, one jouled pod, a kid can go through one jouled pod in about three to four days. So that's one pack of cigarettes, same nicotine content, and it's three to four days, some even less.
Yeah.
We're really proud of the partnership you have with our schools. You're doing a great job, so.
Keep spreading the word. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item eight B is the Volition Youth Vaping Ordinance. So, Dr. Miller and Ms. Mansky, where did she go?
Right here.
Oh, you're putting that away. Okay, we'll take a pause for a second. Hi.
Anything? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we thought you would help us go over this.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So, so if you want to tell us about your ordinance first, what's behind it, and then we can explain to the board about our letter.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julianne Amansky. I'm a public health nurse for the city of Franklin. And on Tuesday, December eighteenth, Common Council Meeting, we will be proposing the inclusion of electronic cigarettes in the city's tobacco ordinance. So as we just heard from the youth, e-cigarette and vaping has become a large epidemic in our community as well nationwide. We're not unique to the problem, unfortunately. So currently, the way our policy reads is strictly for tobacco products, so it does not cover the use of electronic cigarettes. Fortunately, Franklin was one of the first school districts that had a very robust e-cigarette policy, so that is fantastic. And now we're just really bringing the city up to speed on complementing that policy, so that if youth are found in the community with these products, action can be taken with law enforcement. So we do have the support of law enforcement, hopefully the school board tonight. The Board of Health is also in support of this ordinance. In addition to having some stricter regulations for youth abusing these substances, this ordinance would also include the smoke-free air laws. So in two thousand ten, Wisconsin joined other states in, in passing the smoke-free air laws, so you would not be able to use cigarettes in public places such as restaurants or bars. This ordinance would also include e-cigarettes in those places.
Thank you. So the board, the ordinance Ms. Mansky just referred to is in your packet, along with the letter that Dr. Miller, if you want to speak to the letter?
Yep. So, I have drafted a letter on behalf of the administration, myself, and the school board to, in support of this ordinance. So we'd like to reach consensus tonight from the board on sending that, moving that forward
This evening, Ms. Ellie Housen is joining myself and Lindy Rinders, our K-12 music coordinator,
with Julianne, so that it can be presented at the council meeting.
and Robin Wood music teacher. She's been in the district a great amount of time, and has had some great experiences,
Any questions about what's in the letter, what's in your packet?
and is one of our quality educators here in the district.
So without objection from anyone on the board, then we would just pass the letter
We're also represented with the K-12 Music Department, Samantha Ames, from the middle
along to Ms. Mansky to bring to the council.
school, an orchestra teacher.
And it just supports our policy, and, which we're very fortunate that we did approve
And I saw Jamie Schlecht, one of our high school vocal teachers, our high school vocal teacher that snuck in. The rest of the music department wanted to be here, but we have a middle school concert
some time ago.
You were actually one of the first school districts in the state of Wisconsin to have
this evening, and they're all there supporting either their own children that are part of
policy around e-cigarettes, two thousand fourteen.
the middle school program, as well as we have a high school concert, I believe, going on, and they're all there in support, so they were unable to attend this evening.
So, then without objection, then we have the letter for you.
As you saw in your board packet, we shared with you a report regarding K-12 music programming,
Okay.
Then, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for presenting it, if you want to.
Absolutely.
and specifically looking at the work of the new middle school, and the changes in configuration
Thank you.
Then I will move on to item B, see the twenty nineteen twenty music program.
at our elementaries, losing a grade level, as well as the middle school adding a grade
Mr. Reuter, oh.
Do you want to sign this one?
level as we move forward to the nineteen twenty school year.
One second.
Last spring, Ms. Ellie Housen and I met with the entire music staff, which is comprised of thirteen teachers in our district, and talked to them about these structural changes that will be taking place, understanding that sixth grade will no longer be a part of the elementary, and our middle school expand by a third of student population. And we wanted them to start thinking about what does that mean structurally, as far as experiences and organization of our music program, not only in the short term of the nineteen twenty school year, but in the long term of thinking of our comprehensive music program, K-12, and how we can enrich that program and sustain a high-quality program, but bring it to the next level. So Ms. Ellie Housen and I shared some deliverables we wanted to see from the music department, some measures from success, of success, and then think about an approach to a more comprehensive program, K-12. We then left our thirteen teachers for the summer, and they utilized their time, and Ms. Rinders will speak a little more to that. And they, they developed a plan, and you saw that plan that was outlined specifically around this mission and vision statement that is in the report, and thinking about a plan from our earliest learners all the way to those seniors and their experiences in music, not only as performers, but as citizens of enriched music experience. So tonight, as we talk about the changes that we'll see in the music program in the short term, and then thinking about the long term through curriculum review cycle, I just want to be cognizant of the mission and vision that the staff created on their own, the teachers, and the drive and charge they were put forward with to come up with this plan.
Good evening. I want to talk you through some of what we're currently offering at the elementary school when it comes to music. At the fifth and sixth grade level, we are currently running what we like to call the middle school model, where students go to music all at the same time at the, at the entire grade level. So all fifth graders and sixth graders at their given music time go to music at the same time, and they're able to make choices if they'd like to be in band or orchestra, and then they're also enrolled in choir. Running a middle school model in an elementary has given us some complex and unique challenges over the years, while we're trying to offer kids opportunities to make choices, and give them opportunities to grow and expand, and, and work up to that middle school and high school level. It also has given us some challenges with the complexities of how they are able to have those classes be quality classes in comparison to the middle school model with multiple staff, with different kinds of scheduling. One thing that we have noticed over the past few years is that at the middle school model, we're able to offer four different music classes at the same time, a band, an orchestra, a choir, and then a non-performance group such as a general music. At the elementary, we attempted to do that several years back, offered a band and an orchestra by choice, and then also a general music. However, not having that staff with thirteen people in the district, not having that extensive staff to travel to five different schools, we left out one of those choices, that being choir. And over several years, we noticed that, that general music class had very low enrollment, sometimes to the point of eight students in comparison to some of our larger groups, especially in those schools where the population might be only fifty kids at a grade level such as Ben Franklin or South Oak Glen. In, in a response to that, we decided to then offer choir to make sure that as we're building our new performing arts center, that we would be able to grow those programs and make sure that we are growing the programs to fill into those wonderful facilities. And we ran into a very similar situation. We inspired our children to make choices in wanting to take an instrument. They had already had general music, which offers a lot of singing, but not necessarily in the same kind of delivery model as choir. But again, we saw those enrollment issues. So in response to that, we changed a few years back, have all students enrolled in choir, and they may now take a band or an orchestra. And that created an inequity in time period for minutes of the students' re, how do I say this? What they receive in contact time for band and orchestra is going to be much greater in comparison to the kids who take band, orchestra, and choir. So over the time, we have noticed that there's such complexities. When we were offered this opportunity, we really wanted to try something very different, something new that we had never even considered here in Franklin, to make sure that our program is growing, we're retaining students, we're providing a quality program for them, diversification for them to be able to join later if they decide they would like to join choir at a later date, or start an instrument in one of those other grade levels, not right off the bat in fifth grade.
So with that, the thirteen teachers came up with a very comprehensive plan, a plan and approach to music, starting next fall in the nineteen twenty school year. General music will be K-5, and they'll meet two times a week for thirty minutes. The theory of action and belief of the programming in K-5 is that the experience from kindergarten through fifth grade will build a strong foundation of understanding of music, music theory, and application, so that when the students enroll for new courses at the sixth grade level, whether it be the course, band, orchestra, choir, or world music, which was approved just last month by you as a board for a new course at Forest Park next fall, students will have informed decision-making, and they will then be required to take a music per state statute at sixth grade in one of those four given areas. Seventh grade, then, you, students will have the option to continue on. If I am a student that has selected band at sixth grade, and I want to continue on as a seventh grader, I will also then, because of our model we've put together at the new Forest Park, students will have more opportunities in seventh and eighth grade than they've ever had, to take elective courses that will prepare them to make informed decisions at Franklin High School. So students who really want to go down that music track, right now, we, our current model, you pick band, you pretty much stay with band, or you don't take music. You pick orchestra, you pick choir, that's your track, and that's what it is. With the model that we have moving forward at Forest Park, it allows students to make some more choices, as well as if you're a music-minded student and come from a family that, that's a passion of yours, and the, and the focus you want to move forward, knowing about those opportunities, and the great programming and course design we have at the high school, you may utilize your elective credits to take maybe a second instrument, join the choir, and play in the band, or take one of our non-performing musics at the seventh grade level, American music, and then at the eighth grade level, digital music. That then leads to alignment to the FHS courses that are currently in place, and you can see that outline there, which then we get, we're opening the opportunity and experience at Forest Park, which then allows for students to make those, again, informed decisions when selecting courses at Franklin High School. The music staff really looked at what does, not only, we build the structure of courses and selection of courses, but what's our approach daily to music instruction. Having been at the middle school for four years and had previously as the principal, one of the things that I saw is a hot, is an area of reason for sometimes students to not continue on in band, orchestra, and orchestra specifically as ensemble, is they have lessons on top of the instructional time. And students feel anxiety at times when they're pulled for a fifteen-minute lesson, and they need to really hone in on their skills with the trumpet, and they're pulled to take a lesson during a math class, let's say. And they work with their instructor in music, and it's great, and they feel confident about themselves, but now with transition, everything, they've missed maybe twenty, twenty-five minutes of math class, and now they have the anxiety of, I missed half of math class. So it's that give and take of, we know that both approaches, classroom instruction, as well as the lesson and encore instruction are vital to the success and well-being and engagement of our students at the middle school level. The music department, six twelve, want, is going to move forward with an instructional approach of co-teaching, which means we will have two educators, two music educators in the classroom, and let's say a band is forty-two students. Instead of everyone doing the same thing at the same time, if Ms. Rinders and I are co-teaching, Ms. Rinders might take the large group and work for a performance like tonight that's taking place at the Sabre Center, and I might pull, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a music educator, I may pull the flute players and work specifically on a specific skill or technique that needs to be refined in order to improve our overall performance of a band, rather than waiting for those students to go back to another class, and then they're pulled for a lesson. This also helps build some of the programming long-term, as high school teachers and middle school teachers collaborating together through an instructional approach like this. We might have some high school teachers dipping their toes in middle school classrooms and vice versa. Now you're building a program comprehensively, where a high school teacher, like Ms. Umhafer, may come down to the middle school to work with Ms. Miracle, and now she, Ms. Umhafer can talk with students in that co-teaching model in smaller groups about, hey, you know, your strength is really geared towards, and then point out those future aspects, where right now, we really have a singleton approach, where at the element, we have elementary music, middle school, and high school. This builds that comprehensive program that allows for those relationships to be built with future teachers, as well as refine skill and improve practice. And it, and it builds a more collective department overall, as we think about recruiting students into music and retaining them long-term to grow our program. Is there anything else you want to add? And I, I might say that currently this year, Ms. Miracle, Mr. Warner at Forest Park advocated to Ms. King and Ms. Rinders and myself to try this approach. So working with Ms. Ellie Housen, Ms. King, and Mr. Warner, Ms. Miracle, worked to develop that in the schedule. Ellie, anything else about co-teaching?
No, I, I mean, I think, I think that says a lot about the model. I think when you listen to the educators at the table, this was the model that they embraced. They understand the power of a co-teach model, and how it builds programming collectively and in a, in a spectrum over time for children. It really does create a lot of strong transitions. The middle school teachers understand who their band teacher might be at the high school, vice versa, the same with orchestra. They're really able to do differentiation right in the moment in the instructional environment, where they might need to pull a small group, they might even need to pull a particular child. They might be children that are struggling, they might be children that are excelling, in order to really make that the most powerful program over time, building those relationships, focusing in on the right skills, and then that retention aspect in the overall programming strands.
One more thing I do want to add about co-teaching. I'm putting on my parent hat now. My children have benefited from co-teaching in music in other school districts, and I've seen it from the parent perspective, and the opportunities they've been able to have because they've been pushed or, or encouraged to try something different, because there were two teachers in that classroom, and one teacher would go and work with a small group of, of students, or try to get them to try something different than they've never tried before, because they had that opportunity to do that. So as a parent, I've seen it work for my children individually, and have seen the progress they've made and the opportunities they've been given, and I've thought it's been a wonderful thing as a parent, and my students, my children.
So next steps, as we share this information with you tonight, tomorrow, detailed communication about the changes to programming, we'll go out to our parent contingent, as well as staff that are non-music teachers. Again, every music teacher was at the table and drove this, this, these changes for the
vice versa, the same with orchestra. They're really able to do differentiation right in the moment in the instructional environment, where they might need to pull a small group, they might even need to pull a particular child. They might be children that are struggling, they might be children that are excelling in order to really make that the most powerful program over time, building those relationships, focusing in on the right skills, and then that retention aspect in the overall programming strands.
One more thing I do want to add about co-teaching. I'm putting on my parent hat now. My children have benefited from co-teaching in music in other school districts, and I've seen it from the parent perspective and the opportunities they've been able to have because they've been pushed or were encouraged to try something different, because there were two teachers in that classroom, and one teacher would go and work with a small group of students or try to get them to try something different than they've never tried before, because they had that opportunity to do that. So as a parent, I've seen it work for my children individually, and have seen the progress they've made and the opportunities they've been given, and I've thought it's been a wonderful thing as a parent and my students, my children.
So next steps, as we share this information with you tonight, tomorrow, detailed communication about the changes to programming, we'll go out to our parent contingent, as well as staff that are non-music teachers. Again, every music teacher was at the table and drove this, these changes for the betterment of the overall program. Middle school course selection will be happening soon. I believe Friday, there's a communication coming out from Forest Park around that process and to share some of those new courses, specifically in music, that you approved just last month. And then, as you saw in the report and the memo I shared with you, excuse me, the music department was up for curriculum review starting next year. These thirteen talented individuals kind of did most of the heavy lifting this summer without any of us in the room, and really started to set the stage of identifying in year one our current state, defining the desired state, and the work that needs to take place in between there. So they pushed me to think differently and get beyond our schedule, and they, we are going to expedite their review process, and we'll start in January after break on really a condensed version of stage one and two. And again, stage one is that analysis of our current programming, what's working and what's not working, and where do we need to go as we push the status quo, and we think innovatively, and we think about being stewards to our community, as well as that engagement and equity for all students. Stage two, then, that will be hybrid into that work this January, it's really around the action planning. Some of the pieces we have in place, we're going to even go deeper into. So we've identified the instructional approach around co-teaching. We have some teachers currently doing that in the district. Their feedback is going to be vital, but already, the music department has shared, here are some other districts, as like Ms. Reinders alluded to, what the district or children are in, but other districts that are comparable in demographic to us and have very similar programs that approach instruction through a co-teaching model. We'll go visit those, we'll interview those teachers, what works, what doesn't work, and then we'll look at our metrics for success that the teachers have identified, and it's not just beyond retention and recruitment, but it's notoriety, right? Is our band performing in, on the national stage? Are they getting the recognition notoriety? I think about the size of our district, this is my eighth year here, there are fourteen-hundred kids at the high school. We're pushing seventeen-hundred. Our sample is getting bigger and bigger. Our music department should be growing, all of our departments should be growing from the standpoint of notoriety and an enriched program. So we're doing a lot of really great things, and I commend the thirteen teachers who put their nose to the grind and thought differently to make sure that we don't just sustain, but we continually get better, and we build a program that the people of Franklin and the students deserve. So with that, we'll answer any questions that the board may have.
With the co-teaching, have you thought about planning time so that the co-teaching teachers can develop a rapport with each other to succeed?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think having Ms. Miracle and Mr. Warner do that this year, to see what kinds of time is needed and what's been allowed, is really going to help us to move forward and make sure that we put those plans in place for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Vali might be able to speak a little more to that too, because she's working with them.
One of the, one of the greatest benefits of this type of staffing model is that the staff themselves actually do the build-out of the schedule. And they know best the children, the levels of performance of those children, and how to section. Now, they have to work pretty quickly in the spring when numbers come, but they spend the time really making sure the sections line up, their schedules are within the capacity of that, there is adequate overlap time for them to plan and travel and build the numbers that are different. It is a very different staffing model than what's pretty been, that's a customary kind of black and white numbers model. And so their voice is significant as we do that build-out in order to make sure all of those factors are optimized when they, when they really make sure we have those best factors in place.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
So then, you're, you're to put your action plans in place, and when will we see kind of a review of what you're proposing?
It's a great question. So as we work through the curriculum review cycle, the action planning, we'll have a report out then in November of next year. We can give an update throughout the summer, but November, like we do with new courses or changes or modifications to programming, you'll probably see, we'll make sure there's not a concert that night, so all thirteen teachers are here, but they'll share then, here's where we were when we spoke with you last December, here's where we are now, and here are the proposed changes to high school courses or middle school courses, and here's, here's the results of the work we've done around co-teaching, and data's support that this is the right move to move forward.
I think one of the comments to make particular note of is, we heard how you tried some things in the past, and you got the, got the data on that, and you saw it wasn't going the way you wanted it to go, and you tried something else, and then you analyzed it. And so that just speaks to kind of how, how we do things here, and we take a look at, and we look at the data and make sure that if, if something gets implemented and it needs to be tweaked or adjusted, that we're open to doing that. And so I think it was powerful to hear that you had all thirteen together and designed this, and so give it a shot.
I just have one other. The report also included some co-curricular processes, and how does that relate to the, you know, how do you see that intertwining and working with?
Well, I think there's going to be some co-curriculars that will support that we haven't seen before. Music is a unique subject area because it is out there in the community, and many people who don't have children within Franklin Public Schools still like to participate in those concerts and see those performing groups out there in the community. And that's one area we've really wanted to focus more on and get our kids back out there performing for the community. And co-curriculars and extracurriculars allow us to have that flexibility to be able to do that. And I'm, I'm talking K-12, so things that we haven't seen at the elementary for years. You might look at it and say, well, we're just going to, you know, offer general music, but then we'd be allowed to have choirs there as an extracurricular, maybe before or after school, or having small ensemble performance groups, such as the hand chime choir that we've had in the past, or ukulele choirs, you know, guitar choirs, things that the kids would be interested in, to be able to provide those opportunities and get them out into the community.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the work that you put into it. Thank you. Item eight D is the Building and Grounds Annual Report, Mr. Cludie and Mr. Stumvol.
I'll just start us off, the start of this. Tonight, we have the annual Buildings and Grounds Report, and you receive the eighteen-nineteen projects list, as well as the nineteen, the twenty nineteen-twenty, wow, that's confusing, the twenty nineteen-twenty projects, including the, the long-awaited air conditioning of the gym at the high school. And we have, as you mentioned, Mr. Cludie and Mr. Casey Stumvol from our Buildings to Grounds Department to answer any questions you have regarding those in either the report or the lists that you had.
Okay, thank you.
So are there any questions?
Okay. I have a question. With the, the high school business education, adding the walls, the windows, and testing areas, the, the order that we, that we put the preference in for this, and considering the budget, how, how important, obviously, it was important for you to do that, but considering the Countrydale, not Countrydale, Southwood Glen's carpets for the seventy-five thousand for the first phase, and then it was seventy thousand, I'm getting confused here, by adding the walls. Okay, skip that one. Okay, the doors for Countrydale, seventy thousand dollars, and then the seventy-five thousand for the carpeting for the first phase of Southwood Glen. What is more important, how do you, how do you decide carpeting is more important than the doors at Countrydale? So I guess I'm wondering, what is wrong with the doors at Countrydale? Are they just old, or are they, is it worse than, worse than being old?
You're talking about the item six, replacing the classroom doors?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. The doors are of a lesser quality than we're used to. They're hollow, they're hollow core doors. They're, they're perfectly fine at this point, but at some point, you're going to want to replace them. There's a number of things on this list that have been there for many, many years, and they, they never rise to the top, because the doors are fine until you want to make, really make the building better and more soundproof. So at this point, they, they don't rise to the top, yet the Business Ed Department, which we did this, already this year, did rise to the top based on our new model of teaching, Twenty-Frith Century Learners. I mean, it's really been a dynamic, for me, especially being here so long, it's been so dynamic, all the changes that have taken place in education and how, how good they are for kids. I learned about them many, many years ago, and they've been using them out west for quite a while, and now we're, they're coming back into Franklin, and so that's great for me. So that's why they kind of rise to the top, because it's meeting today's needs of today's kids. Those doors are something that you can look at any time in the future, when they can, will rise to the top.
That's, that's what I was wondering. You're in the schools every day, so, I mean, we have thirty-year-old carpeting, and then I was just wondering how bad the doors were, you know, how you make the choice, and...
That's how.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment. You know, I did ask some questions prior to this meeting, I think the board saw those, and one, my last comment was the need for a five-year plan. You, and the response I got, I, I don't think I agree with that response. I think we're a district, I stated we have eight buildings, is that correct? Eight buildings and lots of roofs and lots of heating systems, and we are a growing district, sophisticated district. I think that we can put together a five-year plan. I think we can do better than this list of projects, and then one year out, I think we'll do this. I mean, I think we need to know what the condition of our buildings are, all these roofs, all these building systems, and I think we should be able to plan five years out on what the needs are, so that we know if we are, if we have enough resources to maintain them at the level that we want. You made the statement that the doors weren't what you think we should, as a district, have. Well, if we don't know the condition, what things are, how do we get to that point? I would like to see a greater emphasis on planning, and I would hope that board members here would agree that this list is hardly enough information to adequately plan for a million-dollar expenditure every single year.
But, but they plan further than five years, it's just you're not...
Do they?
Yeah, I believe they do. I think they go further than five years.
I have no evidence of that. I have no evidence that they plan beyond that.
Yeah, we have...
It's never been shared with the board. And I don't want to be critical, I want to look forward, and I would expect that we can do better next year. That's what I want to say.
Do you recall when we used to have the five-year plan?
I don't recall it, no, I do not.
Okay. You brought it up in two thousand nine-ten to the board, and the board asked us to make a five-year plan, which we did for five years. It created problems because people would see something on the list as you're projecting five years into the future, and then something else, as Mr. Cludie said, would rise to the top and push their item back. So it was no longer in the five years, or maybe it was another three years down the line. And then we were getting criticism from inside the district, saying, hey, my, my project was on the list and you moved it, why, why are these things changing all the time? And we would get comments from the outside, how come, how come we're not going with the five-year plan? Even though we said at the time, when you make a five-year plan like that, the only thing you can guarantee is that it's not right. You've projected, but it's going to change. And at the time, I mean, you asked a lot of questions beyond what were the projects to, why does something not on the list that was on the list before? And it, it just started to swirl and create all these questions about things that we really didn't need to be working on. We needed to be concentrating on what are the projects that are best for the kids in this district, that keep our buildings in the best possible shape. And so we did away with the five-year projection, but we left everything else on the list. Everything is on the list that we will be doing, and this will be updated again this spring. As these gentlemen go around building to building, there's things they see and they know about, and they work with the principals as well, who bring the information from their staff on what they'd like to see happen in their buildings, or what they need for the future. And then those things are added, and, and every year, we go through that process on what is it that we absolutely need, what's going on instructionally, what's going on from a really a maintenance standpoint, things that are, are going to break or foreseen to break. And then we always have the things that break, even though we didn't even know there was anything wrong with them. And we provide money for that as well, so that we're, we're doing the best of both worlds in taking care of things that are on cycles and that we know about, as well as things that pop up. And this, this allows us to do that without getting people invested in which year their item is listed, and whether we're going to end up doing that or not.
I've been involved in five-year plans my whole career, and yes, things change. There's reasons why they change, people can understand that. That's not an excuse for, for not planning. It's not.
We are planning.
And I would just ask that we share those plans. I mean, how do we know that the seven hundred thousand is adequate to maintain the buildings long-term? If you don't share what the current condition is, or what, are we keeping up?
We are.
With a replacement plan? I'm just asking for shared information, and that's, and I think it's possible, I think it's, it's best practice. Lots of organizations do it. I don't understand why you don't want to do it. I don't understand that.
We've tried it, and it didn't work out for us. That's why we don't want to go back to that. These gentlemen do a great job of keeping tabs on that and keeping our district ahead of the curve. We're not a district that, when times got tough in early two thousand and we had to cut the budget, we started, we started with maintenance. Other districts started with maintenance, we never cut maintenance. We always kept it high, and we actually increased it over those years.
I'm just saying you didn't. I'm just asking for plans, that's all I'm saying. And we don't need to, you know, keep talking about this. That's my request, that's my expectation, and we can move on.
Okay.
But as your expectation, I think that has to be the, the whole board requesting.
I would be interested in hearing if you really think that this document here isn't sufficient information to approve a million-dollar expenditure every single year.
It's as good as anything else we're getting. I think it's fine.
I know, I know they did have the plan in the past, they, and I understand what Mr. Mills is saying, that it was all over the place, and I, I'm confident in how we're, our maintenance is, is being done. It's, we don't have to look for an operational referendum, and we don't have, we have great maintenance, our schools are in tip-top condition. And I'm happy with this.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, yeah.
So this list of thirty-four items is kind of what you've seen as you've been going around, and then, but this list is alphabetical by school, not by priority.
Correct.
Obviously, because then you've highlighted the things that you want to put in the nineteen-twenty.
Yes, and it is, and it is time, we do need to update it this spring, as we do every year. So we'll update it, and so the next report will look, the list is likely to get longer.
Can you prioritize the items that you're not going to get to suddenly?
I, I don't understand the question, prioritize the items?
Well, here is, you're showing us what you're wanting to put in the budget for nineteen-twenty. The items that are not being put in the nineteen-twenty budget, can you prioritize those as far as when you possibly would get to them, or when you're looking to get to them, knowing that priorities change?
Right, it would be going down that same road, but yes, we could do that.
So even if it's not a five-year plan, it would be a three-year plan or something like that, with some type of priority on the items? Because certainly, there's some things here that you can put off longer than others.
Yes.
And that can be part of the, part of the narrative as we go through this the next time around here, here the, as, as the list changes, you can highlight some of the things you're looking at as tier two.
Yes.
Don't have to nail you down to what those are, but at least we're, we're aware of what's on there. Don't have to nail you down to what those are, but at least we're aware of what's on the horizon.
Certainly.
So the roof project you have on here for, there is only one roof project. I think there's probably two. And we have how many square feet of roofs? This is it for five years?
Approximately 14 acres. Approximately 14 acres of roof? Well, that's all that are showing age at this point. And we do, we have our roofs inspected once a year, and those are the ones that are causing us trouble right now, are starting to deteriorate quickly. You will notice, however, though, that for Southwood Glen, items 23 through 26 are also the remainder of Southwood Glen, also our oldest roof.
How old is that?
1992.
Ninety-two?
It's the original roof. It also wouldn't meet our current specs of roof the way we did it. They did something back then that has, it'll still last 30 years, but I can get them to last 40.
I mean, it looks like roofing in HVAC units, et cetera, are some of the high-ticket items. Do you have a specific roof plan that looks out five or 10 years, saying in the future, these are the roofs that are going to need attention?
Yes, absolutely. One of the things that's happened recently is, and sadly, our roofing consultant for many, many years has retired. And sadly, for the last few years, and I didn't really know about it, he was terminal. And so we have a new roofing consultant, a new set of eyes, and that's why these roofs have risen to the top. But the plan was, I was going to do part of Southwood Glen this year, more of Southwood Glen. But those roofs rose to the top because we have a new set of eyes looking at it, finding new issues, and we should be able to, we'll, roofing, we'll have more information on roofing coming up.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8E is the annual assessment report. Dr. Miller and Mr. Cohen?
It's behind me. I just had a couple of comments that I thought I'd make. Mr. Cohen obviously will tell us more about the report. But I do want to remind the board that the data you're looking at is testing data from the fall of 2017 and basically the spring of 2018. So that's the data that you were looking at. You'll note that, I'm sure you've noted, that all of our elementary schools continue to significantly exceed expectations, so we're really proud of that. And our middle school and high school scores showed an increase in their achievement from the previous year. So that was very good as well. Trends have been difficult to identify in the past because there's changes in the test protocols that have been used. But we're heading towards more stability in terms of what the state is doing and the metrics that they're using. The standardized tests that you looked at are important, and they do inform our coherence plan. But we also use a lot of other assessments regularly to measure student progress and district goals. So I believe our coherence plan with its short cycles of review will allow us to have greater influence over our standardized test scores. Essentially, we're going to know more along the way about how we're doing. And to your point, Mr. Nielsen, make those adaptations or tweaks to make sure that we're heading in the right direction with student growth. And then, in the area that the district, and you'll hear more about this from Mr. Cohen, really needs to focus on is closing our achievement gaps, particularly with our students with disabilities and our students who are English-language learners. We also have an achievement gap for students who are considered economically disadvantaged. So this is an important focus for our district. And then finally, I just want to say that this data belongs to all of us. I think we can all be proud as a community of our students in this district and that we're going to always continue to work to get better. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cohen, so he can get into more detail with you.
Good evening, and I have just a few slides to share with you this evening. So a couple of things, just to get started. One, you have the full report in Board docs, as well as the college and career readiness profile, and I'll reference that a little bit in terms of how we're utilizing that and how it factors into our assessment methodology. I wanted to start with the state report card. As you know, the state report card is fairly complex in how it organizes information and how it reports information. And as Dr. Miller indicated, the assessments at the state level that go into making up that state report card and those numbers have changed over time, and in many cases, changed significantly. Just as a reminder, the state report card takes into account three to five years of data. And again, it's always coming to us, kind of a year removed from where that data was. And so we go back really six years from now to indicate where some of the first data sources were. So if you think about the state in terms of the assessments that were administered, we were administering the WKCE, and then it went to the Badger exam, and then it went to the Ford exam at the high school level. It went from the WKCE to the ACT. So, you know, as you're dealing with different assessments that have different metrics and different standard scales and scale scores, those numbers change over time. And so we're getting some increasing stability, and that's a good thing. For example, this report card reflects the first time that we've had three consistent years of Ford exam data at the 3-8 level. And so the Badger exam has finally dropped off of the scores in terms of the calculation. At the high school level, we still only have one primary assessment that factors into the state report card, and that's the ACT junior year. And as a result, because we don't have year-to-year comparisons at the high school level, there's no growth score on the high school report card. Just to kind of preview, the next state report card that will reflect data from the 18-19 school year will incorporate the ACT Aspire at the ninth and 10th grade level into the state report card for the first time, which means next year, for the first time, we'll get a growth score at the high school level. That metric will not only significantly impact the high school scoring, but also the district scoring. And we're kind of, at this point, not able to anticipate how that's going to factor in. Additionally, just a reminder that as you're looking at kind of these four primary areas on the state report card, student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, non-track, and post-secondary readiness, there are different weights assigned to those areas, and those differ by school, by district, really throughout the state. You can see where it says priority area weights, how it's broken down for the Franklin Public School District. The weights change between student achievement and district growth depending on the percentage of students who are considered to be economically disadvantaged. So school districts that have a higher population of economically disadvantaged students weight the growth metric more than the achievement metric. And for the opposite, those districts weight the achievement metric more. And so you can see how that breaks down. In terms of celebrations in the data from a state report card standpoint, obviously, we continue to be a high-achieving district. You heard Dr. Miller reference our elementaries again significantly exceeding expectations, our middle and high school exceeding expectations, our district score exceeding expectations. And again, we saw some good growth, both at the middle and high school level in terms of moving closer to that significantly exceeds expectations mark. One of the areas of the report card I want to highlight in particular is the closing gaps metric. As we've analyzed the data over the last several years, and again, this year, it becomes the area of most volatility for us. And what I mean by that is, when we see decreases in the state report card, either at the district or building level, it's most frequently a result of the closing gaps metric decreasing. And when we see increases in the overall report card score, it's most frequently related to increases in the closing gap metric. And as a reminder about what this metric represents, the state takes the local district data as measured by a number of traditionally marginalized student group populations. So racial diversity, socioeconomic status, students with disabilities, EL students. And it tracks their growth over five years against their opposite subgroups statewide. So for example, economically disadvantaged students in Franklin are compared to all non-economically disadvantaged students statewide. And what the state wants to see is that you're seeing achievement and growth levels with those students at a rate that's higher locally than it is for the non-subgroups statewide. So the kind of short version of that is, they're looking at how well you're closing the achievement gap between students who are in a traditionally marginalized group, as reported by the state, and those who are not. And so when we do a better job of closing those gaps, our overall scores go up. And when we struggle in that area, our scores go down. Given that is, you know, an area of increased focus for us, and certainly, we want to see all of our students achieving at a high level, and we want to see all students attain one year's growth in one year's time or more. We've been really intentional about our planning efforts and the alignment between our focus in closing those achievement gaps as kind of built into the coherence plan. So as the team came together last spring, and we kind of worked out the development of our core values and thinking about what strategies we were going to use in terms of increasing achievement in the district, equity and closing those gaps really became front and center for us. We have, one of our core values is equity, and you can see the statements that are associated with that. And we also have some specific strategy statements in the coherence plan, both in the three-year version of the plan and in the annual scorecard relating to equity. And I'll let you take a look at those. So as we think about our strategic efforts as a district, this will continue to be and has been a priority area for us. And we're confident that our continued focus in this area will move our district forward in terms of overall achievement for all students. Beyond the state report card, though, we know that there are multiple measures that we are identifying as important to student progress and student outcomes. As was shared with you by the high school team and this team throughout the year a couple of times so far this school year, we have a college and career readiness profile that's based on the National Redefining Ready Framework. And that framework takes into account a number of factors. On the college-ready side, from ACT to advanced placement participation and success. And then on the career-ready side, a number of factors that we know contribute significantly to student engagement and student preparedness beyond high school. And so we're continuing to actively incorporate strategies that address and provide opportunities for students to have work-based learning experiences, to earn industry credentials while in high school, to earn dual credit, to participate in core curriculums. And then, as you know, the last couple of years, we've had an increased focus at the senior level on capstone course experiences and tracking the percentage of students who are involved in those experiences, given their connection to community mentorship, hands-on learning, that really is an application of everything they've learned in their previous years in school. In addition, we continue to monitor and administer something called the Gallup Student Poll, which is a poll that's administered nationally and measures students in the areas of engagement, hope, and then some career and financial literacy areas. And one of the areas is called entrepreneurial aspirations, the idea that students are both career and financially literate by the time they leave school. And so we have some goals, as you know, in the coherence plan, specifically focused on engagement and student engagement. We continue to monitor our progress in that area. The other metric that is important to us is our advanced placement. And as you saw in the report, there was a significant jump in the number of advanced placement exams that were taken in the 17-18 school year. And we continue to maintain a high pass rate there. Just to give you some context, of the students who took an AP course and an AP exam in the 17-18 school year, we had 76% of those students achieve a three or higher on at least one exam, meaning that around 338 of our students at the high school last year were eligible for college credit, just based on their advanced placement participation. To give you that number in context, the national average is 61%, and the statewide average is 69%. So our AP program remains strong, and our students continue to participate and achieve at a high rate. The other metric that we've started tracking in recent years, and this comes courtesy of the National Student Clearinghouse, is our collegiate or post-secondary degree completion rate. And this data is important to us because we're often asked, how do we know or how do we identify the impact of our preparedness in high school for students beyond high school? In other words, what happens to the students once they leave our doors? And so this is one measure that we do have, which is the percent of students who start a post-secondary degree program following high school, and then what percentage of those students successfully complete a degree program within six years. And so, again, these are our percentages over time. And again, it represents a cohort six years removed from the data. So the most recent data you're seeing here is the graduating class of 2012, and the left-hand column represents the graduating class of 2008. So we're a little bit removed from that data, and yet we want to see a trend line that moves in a positive direction in terms of students who are successfully completing. And as we continue to engage with our alumni, we want to know kind of what's happening to our students and have continued conversations about what barriers they may be facing and how we might help them address those in high school prior to them leaving our doors.
How do you get this information?
So we subscribe to the National Student Clearinghouse. They track that data for us, and then they provide it to us in numerous school districts throughout the country.
Okay. So that's not a percentage of, as it reads, a percentage of high school graduating class that complete post-secondary? That's the percentage of those that go to post-secondary and complete?
That's the, yes, the percent of students who started a degree program and then completed a degree program.
Okay. Because that's a little different than what it reads. That's why I thought that was a percentage of high school graduating class completing a post-secondary. That just, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and that's the label the clearinghouse gives us. Ultimately, it is the students who start a degree program and then complete a degree program. And the national average for this last year was 56%, so right around the national average. And so I wanted to just conclude with a couple of questions that we typically get, and I wanted to, again, kind of address those with the board. One of the questions we get frequently is, do we receive and use the data sooner than the public release? As you know, this data gets released typically in the fall, so October, November. But we have the data much earlier. And so a lot of these metrics we have into the spring, if not into the summer. June and July is kind of a prime reporting month for a lot of the state metrics. And so we get that data in June and July and are able to incorporate it into our continuous improvement planning or improvement planning efforts. And then we get a copy of the state report card initially in about September, August, September, and then there are opportunities for that to be revised at the state level before the final public release. So we are getting the data much sooner than it's certainly coming here. But the state embargoes that data and prevents us from releasing it publicly until we reach a certain point. And so we're using it to improve instruction much earlier than it's released publicly. We also get this question often about, is the state testing too much? Are we administering too many standardized assessments? And I would say that the state has made some significant progress in that area the last several years. The amount and volume of testing that has occurred that's been state mandated has continued to become more consistent and less frequent than it has previously. And we're also seeing, I would say, significant value in the data that we're getting now. The Wisconsin Ford exam is clearly aligned to our Wisconsin state standards, and as a result, is good information for us and is actionable. Certainly, the ACT is a quality assessment, an assessment that we know is a predictor of post-secondary success. And so we find value in this assessments that we're administering. And then, of course, we choose to administer local assessments. And I would just highlight that the reason for that, again, is we need to act on the data in real time. And so if we wait on these once-per-year administered state assessments, we're always chasing the data. And we would prefer to administer assessments that let us act in the moment with the students right in front of us, rather than planning for the students that were in our, you know, classrooms a year ago. And so we administer assessments like the MAP so that we can get that data in the hands of teachers, and we can impact student achievement kind of more frequently than we could with just this broad data. The other question that comes up frequently is, how are we meeting the unique needs of each school? Certainly, as you look at some of these grade-level progressions, particularly fifth, sixth grade, we have five elementaries. And so there are unique needs at each site that aren't necessarily addressed in the broad data here. And, you know, we truly believe that the best individuals, the best professionals to impact students are those individuals that are closest to the students. And so as we think about, you know, the impact of a particular grade level in a particular building, we rely upon the teachers in that school and the administration in that school to work collaboratively together, along with families and students, to address anything that might be an area of concern or an opportunity for growth, and then work to plan around that diligently. And as a reminder, you know, as this conversation stays at kind of the 10,000-foot view of the district, because we're working in short cycles now around improvement, and principals and their improvement teams are adjusting plans every 45 days, the principals will have an opportunity to be here and interacting with you more frequently. And so at the January 23 board meeting, our principals will be back, and they'll be reporting on their actions that they took from the last time they were here to present to you, and then they're going to show you new data from the winter, comparing the fall to the winter, and talking about what we've learned and how we're doing in terms of our progress, based on the students this year. And some of the data points that you're going to hear from them about are the MAP, the ACT, the ACT Aspire Gallup. And so we'll continue to provide you that opportunity. So as you think about and look at the report, and maybe identify areas that you want to dig a little deeper on, I would encourage you to engage deeply with those principals in January and have conversations about some of the things that you're seeing, both in terms of strength and potentially areas for growth. So with that, we would welcome your questions.
And I know I talked with you before, but I just have, do you see any value in really comparing ourselves to other districts, or not?
Yeah. So certainly, we want to be the highest-performing district in the state, right? And so as we're thinking about our comparisons to other districts, you know, there are a lot of lot of factors that go into individual districts, right, in terms of student population, student demographics, you know, the types of programming they're offering. We engage and study in districts frequently when we're engaging in a curriculum review process or we're thinking about implementing a new program. We're doing a lot of site visits with other districts in the state to identify kind of what they're doing and how it might benefit us and what we might be able to kind of emulate here. So, I would say, the benefit of the comparison for us is, one, we're always striving to be better and to achieve higher, but more importantly, to identify districts where we might want to go in and work with them on some things related to our curriculum and our programming to help improve the district as a whole.
And what would be the biggest risk for, you know, we're a high-performing districts, and there's a lot of them in the area. What's the biggest risk for falling below that? I mean, when you're that high, do you worry about things dropping? Is there a risk at all to that?
Yeah, I would say we're confident we're going to continue to improve.
Okay.
And so, I would say, that's not really a risk from our mindset, right? We're going to continue to be a high-performing district, and we're going to continue to do, to make the changes we need to, to continue to move in a positive direction.
Our strategic goals are built long-term, three years, to continue to improve. I would say comparing ourselves to other districts is valid. I mean, we have a chart here. And we are a high-performing district, but I think we could be higher.
We agree.
Finding ourselves right in the middle of the pack, if you're looking at it. And so, I think that's something where we need to take a look at some of this, and how can we start getting into where some of these other districts are grading out? So, it's great that we identify the things we're doing well, and we're doing a lot of things well, but I know you guys always look at, how can we get better? And I think this chart, you know, proves it, right?
And I would say that if you were to pull those district-state report cards up, that closing gaps metric is the one that would stand out to you, that they're consistently performing higher.
Yep.
On some of those gaps.
Yep.
Because I do think that a big factor is socioeconomic factors that really provide that base for performance across the state, and you don't really have a lot of control over that.
Right. And the state would agree, right? And that's why they balance those metrics differently in terms of achievement and growth.
And that's, you have to understand a little bit more of the details to really appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if the public really takes into consideration.
Yeah, there's, it is a fairly complex report in terms of how they get into the calculations.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item H is the Board's Clerk Report, the Spring Election Notice. Mr. Alexandrovich, would you mind reading the notice?
I would be delighted. Notice of School Board Election, School District of Franklin, April 2nd, 2019. Notice is hereby given that there is an election to be held in the School District of Franklin on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, and the following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. The term of office for a school board member is three years, beginning on Monday, April 22nd, 2019. Office is school board member, there are two incumbents, Alan Alexandrovich, Debbie Larson. Notice is further given that a campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, in the office of the School District Clerk, 8255 West Forest Hill Avenue, Franklin, Wisconsin. Notice is further given that if a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on Tuesday, February 19th, 2019.
Thank you. Item HG is the Forest Park Middle School Construction Transition Update. Mr. Millsar and Dr. Miller.
I'll start with the construction portion of that. On the outside of the building, the landscaping has, they've had to stop, as you can imagine, for this year. There's still some to do, so they'll be back again next year. You probably noticed the parking areas in the front and the back are paved now, which they weren't in our last report. Makes it look like it's really getting close to being finished. Inside the building, in the office area, the drywall is in and painted, the cabinets are ready to be installed. In the gym, the gym floor has been installed, and the first coats of finish have gone on. The lines will go on in the next week or so. And it's, if you've been in gyms before in the past, the lighting is always very slow to react if you go into a gym and it's dark. 10 years ago, it might have taken 10 minutes for the lights to come up, and recently, it's a little faster, but with LED lighting and motion sensors, it made me gasp. I walked into the gym and it was dark, and instantly, it was bright white light in there, and the whole thing has lit up just beautifully. So, it's a simple thing, but it's kind of amazing, as you have not seen that before in an area that large. So, it'll work very well for keeping the lights off, and we don't need them, and having them come on instantly when we do. In the kitchen, the vent hoods and freezer and cooler have been installed. On the student commons, the drywall and painting has started. On the finished ceiling is starting to go in. On several other areas, the drywall is in, so, drywall is pretty much in everywhere. And then, in this last section up here at the front, still waiting for lights to go in, and light switches and that kind of thing. And the locker rooms have had the lockers installed so that they meet their name. Now, they are locker rooms. So, it's coming along very well, still planned to be done on time, and it's really interesting to see. I think as we, as we go on, if you've had a chance to look at some of the pictures online, we refresh those every two weeks so that you can see what some of those inside areas look like.
Is there any chance some of the newest lockers that were installed can be used in one of the elementary schools?
Yeah, we're looking at all of, mainly the newer things that have gone into Forest Park and reusing those in some of the other schools, definitely. Some of the newer furniture and the lockers and so forth.
The middle school implementation team meets once a month, and we discuss the academic and co-curricular program for the school, staffing, training, and a lot about moving logistics. There's a lot of moving logistics that we're working through right now. Various individuals on the team assume responsibility for various tasks and then come back to the larger team and report out on things. Regular communications being placed in the school bulletins regarding the new middle school, so all of our families can see that. We have decided that the eighth-grade promotion ceremony will be moved to Monday, June 3rd, and we're going to hold that at the sports complex this year. It works out really well because we have the high school graduation on the 2nd. Everything's set up, so we can use it for the eighth-grade promotion ceremony, so that's going to work out good. And then, again, a lot on logistics. We're working with the moving contractors, Mr. Millsar, Mr. Cludier, Mr. Stumble, really working out all the details of just who physically moves what, where does it go, how is it wrapped? Lot of details going on around that. And then, finally, the middle school staff and the sixth-grade teachers will be on another tour of the school in January, so, they're going to be excited. We're excited for them. Thank you.
Follow-up board tours to hear something about?
Right, right, yeah. We want to do a board tour as well.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Item H, the Treasurer's Report is available in the Board Docs library. Item 9, School Board Liaison Reports. We have A, Personnel and Policy, Policy 4242, Teacher Preparation Time. Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. Two policies coming before us tonight. First one, 4242, Teacher Preparation. This was mostly a rewrite on the policy that was in place, cleaned up some of the language. It's a short policy. I don't have a whole lot else to add. If any questions, I'll direct those to Valley.
Well, I just have one question, which has to go back to the co-teaching. So, if we're taking out teachers assigned to team teach, where it says up there, you know, the additional minutes, how, again, how do teachers have time to get together to plan if we take out extra minutes? And then, where do these extra minutes come from during the day anyway? Because, you know, with the contact minutes in the next policy.
Yep. So, music operates, music as an isolated area will operate very differently as we work through their staffing model, because there will be time, sometimes based upon the way we section in and among itself, that allows them some of that time to co-plan together. And they would be the anomaly to a policy. So, I wouldn't write the policy around that particular group, especially in the beginning year where we're going to see how that model lays out. And in my experience, over time, it never lays the same into the schedule every year. So, it really be, will be a collaborative approach as I work with them to make sure that they have that adequate time. And so, the policy is really targeting or striving for addressing the majority, not the minority of the way we staff.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Then, we're looking for a motion to approve the revised policy, Board Policy 4242. Do I hear that motion? So moved. Most my Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Mr. Nielsen.
Sorry. The next one relates to contact minutes, Policy 4241. There was more, more language added than taken out in the last policy, but it refers to minimum, average contact time, minimums and maximums, but again, a short policy, so. And Valley, they were just looking, primarily, another thing I didn't say, primarily, these policies are before us because they haven't been reviewed in a long time. So, that's really the genesis for bringing these forward, and that's why I wanted to take a look at what makes sense in today's day.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the revised policy 4241, contact minutes. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Most my Mr. Lewis, is it second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9C, Board Liaison Reports, do we have any reports? I just want to mention to the board that I, as CISA 1 Board of Control Treasurer, I was invited to attend the Association of Educational Service Agencies National Conference in Colorado Springs from November 28th to December 1st, and I did attend, and it was a nice opportunity to see how all the different service agencies across the nation work together and offer different opportunities. And I want to say that Wisconsin Cisas are really ahead of the game compared to other service associations, especially out west. And we offer a lot more when it comes to personalized learning services and alternative schools and services like that. So, it was a good learning experience for being on the Board of Control, so, that's my liaison report. And then, next, we move on to, oh, you have one too, okay.
I'm going to be the delegate this year again, and so, I did get the packet. So, if anyone wants to take a look at, and we'll have this, I'm sure, at a meeting before.
Yeah, on January 9th.
The first one, yeah, the 9th.
January 9th. So, we'll ask Lisa to upload the packet.
Yeah.
Did you receive a packet, Lisa? Okay, so, we'll have to see if you can get that packet to her, and she can upload it.
I just brought what the resolutions were. If anyone wanted to take a look at these beforehand, but it looks like I'm going to be going through 22 of them this year. So, but yeah, we'll get that uploaded, so you guys can take a look at it. It's, so, it's interesting.
Usually, they send one to the office, so.
Yeah, that's why I didn't think to bring mine, the whole stack, because usually, it's here.
Okay, thank you for telling us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, we have item 9D, School Community Engagement Visits. Do we have any visits?
I had the opportunity to attend a dance competition last weekend in Little Shute, and the Franklin Palm Squad performed there. They did four different performances. They placed in two out of their four performances.
Great, thank you.
Educator of Southwood Glen. Interesting. One of the things that I learned is going through Class for Math, that the teachers and the students all had their tablets, and the teacher can control what goes to the tablets and what degree of difficulty. And I didn't realize that we had that ability to guide them. So, they're playing a game, and she is directing the game to be more or less difficult for them, so they're learning whatever the lesson is. And there are a lot of kids out on vacation, recess. So, as we walked around, we saw a lot of empty classrooms.
Oh, interesting. Thanks for sharing.
Yeah.
And I did get the opportunity to attend the Middle School Chorus Concert that was at the Sabre Center. It's an interesting group of kids, it's a variety of kids, and they, they did share before each song what the song meant to them and what they were learning, so I thought that was different, and it was very entertaining and kind of puts you in a spirit, so, hold on.
And I participated as a judge for the Forest Park Middle School Seventh and Eighth Grade Spelling Bees. I'm liaison at the middle school, and that was on November 21st, and that was the first round before they go to the all-school spelling bee. And then, Dr. Miller and I attended the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Update Event on December 7th, and we heard from Representative Skoronsky, Senator Craig, and a representative for Senator Larson, and also Representative Rodriguez, just updating us on some of the turmoil at the state level. And then, I also went to Southwood Glen's Winter Joy Concert. Mrs. Tate did a great job with the students, kindergarten, first and second graders. It was also a great holiday spirit concert, so, anything else?
I guess I attended the 4K.
Yeah.
Meeting on the 27th. Lot of good questions, again. This time, there were some answers, though, rather than just a listening session, so, I think it was, it was very well-attended in the evening, so, good session.
Thank you. All right. Item 10, School Board Meeting Debriefing, any comments?
The volition presentation was fantastic. She was so comfortable in front of the whole room, and it was great information.
I believe Ms. Dannick.
All of them were, I didn't want to single out the one.
They were great. But I think she's gone to Washington, hasn't she, to present?
She did mention something about that, yeah.
So, they do a great job with all the students, so. Item 11, Future Agenda Items. We have a Forest Park Middle School presentation on January 9th, Friends of Franklin Recognition, January 9th, open enrollment seats, that's an action item, on January 23rd, Communications Plan Update on January 9th, Review and Discussion of the WASB Resolutions, January 9th, School Improvement Plan Update, January 23rd, and our District Audit Report, January 23rd, and Long-Term Capital Projects, January 23rd, and these are all tentative, subject-to-change dates. And then, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Most my Mrs. Larson, second by Mr. Nielsen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, we adjourn at 7:49.